Okay, welcome everyone to our April 18th public meeting on the financial plan. So we'd like to call it order. Resolution reads be resolved that we do now open this public hearing to present the 2023 financial plan. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Costin. All in favor? Carry on. And we will ask Councillor Gerard, or no, is it, sorry, is it?
Jamie Tissman.
Jamie, okay, I'm sorry.
Are we ready? Today's presentation will start with an overview of completed and proposed projects, then assessments, revenue and expenses, followed by utilities and an explanation of the impact on rate there. I would like to thank everybody for attending this final hearing and to let you know that there will be a chance for questions following the presentation. The town of Ni'pua's vision is to grow Ni'pua as a community of choice through enhanced organizational excellence, while providing a safe community, being accountable and transparent, and engaging residents and businesses to invest in our community. The financial plan is the tool that the municipality uses to achieve some of these goals. In 2022, our completed projects were the completion of the RCMP building, purchase of a new fire truck, prep work for the new pool slide, the intersection change at Mountain and Commerce, Davidson Street was paved, and the reservoir at the water treatment plant was completed. This year's budgeted plans are road construction, we have many projects in the works, the new hospital road, and repairs to Isabella and Hamilton are a few. Remodeling the old RCMP building into a training center, continuing with repairs at Park Lake from the flood, flower beds at the cemetery, and continuing with our recreational planning projects. In Manitoba, there is a basic formula for calculating taxes. That formula has three parts: property tax assessment, mill rate, and dollar levy requirements, or tax levy. So you take the assessment times by the mill rate, which gives us the tax levy. Or another way to calculate is we take what dollar amount we require to maintain and improve services, divide by the assessment, and it gives us the mill rate. This is how the municipality charges taxes. Assessment Services is responsible for all assessments in the province of Manitoba, with the exception of the city of Winnipeg. They follow the municipal assessment app and use market value of sales in the area to come up with your assessment. Reassessment happens every two years to keep current with market values and conditions so that the assessment is fair and equitable. In Manitoba, only a portion of the total property is subject to taxation: 45% for residential properties, 26% for farmland properties, and 65% for commercial properties. The municipality then applies portion assessment by the mill rate to calculate the taxes payable for that property. Our assessment base is made up of 59% residential properties, 32% commercial properties, and 9% is firm exempt properties, which is your churches, schools, and hospitals. 2023 is a reassessment date, so Ni'pua's municipal assessment increased by around 11%, with about 3% of that being new assessment and 8% due to changes in the market values of properties. With the increase, $1,000 will now raise $225,377.86 in tax levy. Our municipal mill rate for this year is 22.39 and has increased 1.5% from 2022. The school's mill rate has seen a decrease this year of 8% to 10.103. The educational support levy, which does not apply to residential rate fares, has decreased by 7%. We have no control over these mill rates as they are set by the province of Manitoba and the local school boards. Your property tax bill is made up of 67% municipal tax and 33% school tax, so only 67% of what you pay is going towards the town of Ni'pua operations. Our budgeted municipal revenues for 2023 are around $19 million. The revenue comes from: property taxes of 28%, conditional government transfers of 57%, unconditional government transfers, 6%, user fees and sales of goods, 3%, reserve transfer ins, 3%, other income is 2%, and permits, licenses, and fines are about 1%. This year's total budget and expenditures are also around $19 million, which match our budgeted revenues as we have to have a balanced budget. Our expenditures are made up of 5.39% of general government services, which is your office, elected officials, insurance, and grants; 6% is your protective services, which is fire and police; 58% is your transportation services, so that's your public works, equipment repairs, snow removal, drainage, ditches, and street lighting; 3% is environmental health, which is garbage and recycling; 3% is health and welfare services, which is your cemeteries and social assistance; 0.23% is environmental development, which is your planning and weed control; 2% is economic development; 3.5% is your recreation and culture, which is your swimming pools, parks, playgrounds, camping; 14% is your fiscal services, which is your bank fees, capital, and ventures; and 3% is reserve allocations, with 0.07% being allowance for tax assets. Expenditure changes from last year to this year are seeing increases in all except protective services, recreation, and fiscal services and capital. Most are small increases to more accurately reflect cost, except for transportation services, as this is where we record our flood down to repair, and public health, as we've added in some money to do some prep work for the new hospital. Council's approach regarding which organizations are approved to receive grant funding has remained constant over the years. Their decisions are guided by policy and they measure each request against the established criteria to distribute over $133,000 worth of funding. In addition to supporting very important and worthy organizations, council wanted to ensure equity and fairness for all taxpayers, even if they did not momentarily utilize the organizations or facilities receiving the grants. You will note in some instances, council is taking the position of creating partnerships in the form of exchange of services in order to expand the use of a facility or program with a broader basis. The primary goal is to increase exposure for the organizations and to create additional opportunities for those who may not otherwise access certain programs or services. Council has chosen a variety of recipients for grants this year and are thrilled to support these great organizations. Letters will be sent following the passing of the budget to each of the recipients. This year's capital purchases amounting to around $2.3 million are its office: computer upgrades, $8,000; drainage, $103,000; training center, $355,000; lawn equipment, $14,500; cemetery redesign and columbarium, $295,000; road construction, $550,000; pool, $311,000; and pathway development at $687,000. This year, council will commit the following contributions to the reserves: $65,000 to fire; $15,000 to general; $75,000 to recreation and culture; $100,000 to healthcare facility; $150,000 to the public works and environment. We've also budgeted to transfer monies from some of these reserves to help reduce the burden on the taxpayers for 2023. Now onto the utility operating budget. Revenues will equate to roughly $8,900. Our revenues are made up of water bill income at 29%, hydrant rentals at 1%, other revenue at 50%, and reserve transfer in at 20%. The utility expenditures make up $8.7 million, which equal the utility revenues, as we have to have a balanced budget in this too. Water treatment and supply is 16%. Sewer collection and disposal is 3%. Capital projects are 75%. Reserve allocations are 1%, and debt repayment is 5%. Expenditure changes have been made to more accurately reflect costs with a larger decrease in capital as we have a more accurate cost of what our projects will cost and be completed this year. Reserve contributions have stayed the same. This year's capital purchases amounting to around $6 million are its office: $10,000 for water meters; $1.5 million for development projects; $1.2 million for well mechanization and booster; and $3.3 million for phase two of the wastewater treatment plant. This year, our utility water reserve is seeing a contribution of $100,000 for withdrawal for the wastewater plant, and the utility sewer reserve is seeing a contribution of $12,000. So what does this mean to the taxpayer? Assuming this was not a reassessment year, the change in the municipal mill rate on a $300,000 home would cost $44.55, or a 1.5% increase. However, this is a reassessment year, which may have increased the value of your home to more accurately reflect the market value or the price you could ask for if you sold your home. This year, the average change in reassessment is around 8%.
So now, Owen.
Any questions?
So, Owen, any questions? I guess any questions from the councillors? I think there's a lot of this to talk about throughout the year, but... Owen, have you got any questions? Uh, not at the moment, gonna have to go through these numbers sort of before I can ask anything, you know, good.
Jamie, on the general offering fund, you had the tablet projects, the path we built for $687,000. Did not know if that was grant received.
$50,000 was right.
Do we know the school revenue number yet?
Yeah, that was the slide I was on.
10.103.
The other portion too is on that roads under transportation. A large part of that is funding that's in and out as well from the province in terms of Park Lake repair, because there is no net dollar bill to town residents on Park Lake repair. That is dollar in, dollar out through the province, through the DFA, so...
I guess seeing no questions, I guess be resolved that the council of town of Ni'pua can now adjourn the public meeting at, uh, 6:17. Move by, Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Nigal. All in favor? Okay, welcome to our April 18th regular public meeting. And we will start off, uh, with regular meeting. Be resolved that the council of town of Ni'pua approved the regular meeting agenda for April 18th. Move by. Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Sisley. All in favor? Opposed? Carry on. Okay, and we need to approve minutes, so be resolved that the town, that the council of town of Ni'pua approved the minutes of the regular meeting and the public meeting held April 6th as circulated. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Costin. All in favor? Questions? In favor, opposed, carry on. All right, council reports. So, not any reports. Councillors.
We had a handyman meeting at lunch today. There were 462 trips for the month of March. Celebrations trip was to date to go see Heartbreak Hotel. They will be planning a couple more celebrations dinners, either trips in the upcoming months. There are the three upcoming Saturday casino trips, April 24th, May 8th, May 29th. And Handyman will be the official shuttle for the chamber fair on Saturday, May 27th. You will be able to park your car in the Coop Harton lot and get shuttled over to the fairgrounds by Handyman. So this should help alleviate congestion at the fairgrounds and is needed due to the larger moving this year.
Anyone else? Nope, well, that was quite weak. All right, Hartman reports, manager of operations.
So, we've been working on our transportation study and it appears that our consulting firm today will have a tent set up at the fair to gather some input on the actual coverage. First, kind of somewhat presenting to the public at that point so we can get some feedback. I've been receiving some of my work, so we're issuing out some tenders for work. That works, uh, White House keeping stuff, nothing too big, nothing too small. Staff have started sweeping streets, but maybe plodding tomorrow. And then, same thing, sprinkling up, it's on the back of our minds there. We're actually getting some volunteer requests, of course, to start cleaning up, so we'll be organizing a little bit once things dry up once more after this. And DFA reports, the Park Lake is still on hold until water receipts, and then they can move back to the June and start doing some work again. And I just had an update on the Gulf Coast side. There was a little bit of halt on work there, but they can go back and do some work of the water fringe areas, so they can complete that to ensure that everything's open up and functional for when they open up. Oh, I guess, and the work has started at the wastewater, the phase two construction. They started doing some of the building work and it started a while back now, but we started some exterior excavations. So they'll be expanding that stuff out, getting it prepped up for a month's lab, and then start some of the concrete foundation work.
Okay, anyone have any questions? If not, we will move on to correspondence.
Just one thing, this is a good news story, this is from Canadian Heritage, a celebrate Canada funding application. We've been putting $1,400 towards our candidate aid celebration, so we've been very successful. This is an annual grant we generally receive and use it towards the cost of running Canada.
Any questions? If not, we will look at finance. You've all received the February financial statement. So be it resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ended February 28th, '23. Move by. Councillor Nigal, seconded. Councillor Costin. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry on. Okay, earlier before this meeting, we had a public meeting on our financial plan. So that needs to be adopted, so be it resolved that we hereby adopt the 2023 financial plan. Move by. Councillor Costin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry on. Colleen, RCMP, new business, RCMP contract policing.
So, just a little update, as you're all aware, since 2017 and onward, the town of Ni'pua, as do other municipalities across Manitoba and Canada, are obligated to pay the retroactive salary increases that were approved by the federal government to RCMP policing members. So as that rolled out, we found out that we'd be on hold for $110,000 roughly. What has come of it is, we really can't change that process, and the federal government's standing firm that those monies be paid and not be forgiven to those municipalities. The XCM is still fighting that, as are we. So if we get the money back for it or not, but I think we have to understand that we will have to pay for it, we provide for it in our budget. What this resolution is about is that the A of M and the XCM are asking support for a resolution to say that when we go contract policing with the RCMP, that we bound together and then for any future occurrence that might affect us, whether it be financially or otherwise, and have an impact on our policing globally, that we be included in those conversations so that we clearly understand going forward what's going to happen, whether we have to come up with more money or whether it impacts the number of members or how the policing is serviced, and that rather than just have these discussions at such a high level, bring us into the fold somehow, because if we have to pay these things, we really should have some kind of a say in the process. So this is what this resolution is about.
Any questions? Moving straight forward. Okay, this is a little longer resolution. Whereas the government of Canada has made the decision in Budget 2023 to make municipalities responsible for all retroactive costs stemming from the latest RCMP collective bargaining agreement, and whereas these extraordinary one-time costs, which in some jurisdictions amount to millions of dollars, will cause significant hardship for communities and residents across the country. We were negotiated without meaningful consultation or a seat at the table for the municipalities responsible for paying the bill. Whereas municipal governments are already paying a growing share of policing costs, but unlike other orders of government, cannot run deficits to spread out the impact of these extraordinary one-time sums and the limited revenue tools. And whereas local governments will now be forced to make financial decisions that will impact residents, such as cutting essential services, reducing policing levels, raising property taxes significantly, or canceling work on local infrastructure at a time when Canadians' concerns about community safety and the cost of living are already rising. Whereas going forward, it is critical that the municipalities be proactively engaged in any forthcoming processes related to contract policing to prevent this occurring again. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Ni'pua joins the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in calling on the federal government to commit to ensuring that local governments are meaningful, fully consulted, fully informed, and at the table on issues related to policing costs, given that the municipal role in keeping our communities safe is safe. Be further resolved that the town of Ni'pua conveys this support in writing to the local members of parliament. Move by. Councillor Sisley, seconded by Councillor Gerard. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry on. Colleen, arts and culture.
So this is looking for a resolution, support for an application to the Arts, Culture, and Sports Community Fund. We have previously sent an application last November into them to apply for our alteration of the Riverbend Park improvements to the pool area, or particularly the replacement of the pool building. So we were not successful in that particular round. We've tailored our request now down to reflect a request of $1.8 million, of which we would find half of that funding to go towards that new building. And we could fund that over a period of two years if we were successful. So basically, the construction of a new pool building, the importance of that is to address accessibility issues and whatnot over there. When you look at accessibility legislation that came into play a few years ago, and we have to analyze all of the public infrastructure in Ni'pua and make sure that we can achieve as much accessibility as we possibly could. So, you know, you can tweak, you can do certain things to, that doesn't make you an avoidant or any hardship. To make the pool building accessible, there's really nothing we can do over there to accommodate people with mobility issues, because it's a cinder block building with 90-degree angles in there. It would require major, major, either demolition or reconstruction. So the alternative basically is to take a look at that pool building from the perspective of, we need to create a facility from the ground up that makes sense and is accessible. So we're asking support to proceed with the construction of a pool building over there. It would provide greater accessibility for users, it would create a canteen area that we really don't have existing now. It would also create larger changing rooms. We can put in the UTR washrooms that can be gender neutral or family friendly. We can have easier navigation throughout the facility. Also, if you take a look at just further into the park there, there was a building that existed and contained public washrooms and then an area to offer canteen services should an event occur there. We all know that that building sits in the flood zone. When we have significant flooding at Riverbend Park, it is subject to flooding and damages what down there. So the idea, as we mitigate based on funding we've also received from the province of Manitoba, to mitigate those damages and remove infrastructure or plug phone areas, that will be relocate these things. So the idea being, we could relocate those washrooms as part of this new pool building, and we will move the canteen there as well. And then this use can occur year-round over their 365 days as opposed to having things that are only open during the summer. So that's the idea. Create one building, move another totally out of the flood zone, make it a 365 type of a service for some portions of that pool building. And if we're successful, we would proceed in doing that starting in 2023 with design and whatnot, and hopefully in 2024 complete our project. And of course, this would also give us a better ability to have all of the pumps and whatnot that were stored in the existing building that caused us many troubles just the way everything got the relocated position, and the functionality will improve. So we want your support of an application.
Okay, anybody else, any other questions? Resolution be resolved that the town, that the council of town of Ni'pua approve an application to the Arts, Culture, and Sports Community Fund for the construction of a new pool building that will allow for compliance with accessibility legislation and provide greater functionality for the revitalization of Riverbend Park as a targeted area for increased leisure and recreational activities on a year-round basis. And be further resolved that should the project application be successful, the town of Ni'pua is committed to ensuring that the municipal portion of the funding will be readily available to give effect to the project. Move by. Councillor Sisley. Seconded by Councillor Nigal. All in favor? Opposed? Carry on. Colleen, nuisance birds.
So over here, we have to appoint by resolution the persons that can discharge firearms in the town of Ni'pua for purposes of ridding us of crows and magpies and berman, beavers, gophers, whatever the case. And just to make it clear though, as we have had a request more recently, ravens are not included in this, they are a protected species under the Wildlife Act. You cannot shoot a raven. But we can attack the crows. So I'm asking for approval for Jake Birch and Chad Campbell as our animal control officer, Chad is, and Jake as a penal fills in when necessary to be able to discharge firearms in conjunction with the RCMP and the rest of them.
Okay, pretty straightforward, it's the same annual request. Whereas certain species of birds, such as crows and pigeons, and berman, such as beavers, gophers, dispose of public nuisance and danger to the public, and whereas council deems it necessary to shoot such... And whereas council deems it necessary to shoot such that pose a public nuisance and an health risk, therefore be it resolved that the Town, Council of Towne Ni'poua authorize Chad Campbell and Jake Birch through the direction, excuse me, in consultation with the local police department and the C A O to discharge firearms for the purpose within Towne minutes during twenty-twenty-three year. Moved by Consulier Gerard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Carry. Resolution, Colleen.
So this is follow-up to your passing of approval of the financial plan. Uh, this is the bylaw that actually gives you the ability to levy the rates, and we're just asking for your personal take.
Any questions? Be it resolved that bylaw three-two-two-four-dash-two-three be a bylaw of the Towne Ni'poua to levy taxes for the year twenty-twenty-three to provide for tax due dates and provide for late payment penalties. Be now ready for first ivory. Moved by Consulier Costin, seconded by Consulier Nadeau. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Any other business, Colleen?
I have nothing.
Anyone else? Any other business? Okay, well, this will end the public portion of our meeting as we will move in camera to discuss some confident items. So be it resolved that the council of Towne Ni'poua do now sit as a committee. Do now adjourn, uh, what are we doing here? Committee of the whole?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, the committee of the whole in camera at, uh, order page seven, seven eighteen. Uh, moved by, uh, Consulier Gerard, seconded by Consulier Costin. Uh, all in favor? Carry.